All right, welcome everybody to the Sherwood City Council Meeting, March 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Sylvia, roll call.
Mayor Rosner.
Here.
Council President Young.
Here.
Council Brous.
Here.
Council Mays.
Here.
Council Giles.
Here.
Council Stankey.
Here.
Thank you, and Council Scott is absent.
All right, thank you Sylvia. Approval of the agenda, and before we approve it, I had a conversation with staff. We're gonna pull the resolution on the city goals off. There was just some corrections that staff needs to make. Didn't get made out of our last, it didn't get annotated out of our last works session, correct?
Yeah.
And we'll have it back at the next council meeting for you.
I move to adopt the amended agenda.
Second.
All right, I have, well, yes, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. And then on the consent agenda, as we just talked about, sorry for jumping ahead, we're gonna remove item E. So we're just gonna do A, B, C, and D. So we have four items on the consent agenda tonight. Approval of the February 4th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the February 18th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. Item C, resolution 2025-013, appointing Erin Weeby to the Sherwood Budget Committee. And item D, resolution 2025-014, naming the Sherwood Center of the Arts main hall, the Mira Bowie Theater. That was item D. So all those in favor?
I'll move consent.
I'm sorry, thank you. Got me all, I was so worried I was gonna mispronounce that, that I got all out of shape there. Anyways, I got a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you council. And just a couple things, so we'll bring item E back to the next council meeting. And I just wanted to point out, on resolution D, naming the art center for Mira, which is, I'm so glad they asked us to do that, and it's an honor that we get to do that for the family. If they weren't able to be here tonight, we do plan on having more of a formal dedication ceremony event at the art center coming up, and staff will be working with the family and the friends of the art center to coordinate that. So, all right. And we are on to citizen comments. No citizen comments, it doesn't look like we have anybody online, so we'll go right on to city manager's report. See if we break the record tonight.
Just a couple things tonight. We are currently working on a transportation system plan update, and we're, which is a long-term plan that guides the development of our road sidewalks, bikes, public transit, to ensure safe and efficient and accessible transportation. We're actually recruiting for a citizen advisory committee role on this, which that commitment would be 18 to 24 months during the planning process. That would be updated process runs from April this year to November of 2026, with monthly meetings starting in May. The recruitment closes March 14th, and you can actually find the application on the website under the 2026 TSP update. And then I'd like Chief to have a little time tonight to talk about an important thing.
You haven't heard from me enough tonight?
What?
I think I'm on. So, for those that don't know, every year we have a awards banquet for the police department, and that's to recognize officers throughout the year and things that they have done. The awards are all nominations from within our agency. Most of them are anonymous. This last year, so recognizing 2024, somebody nominated our police, our Sherwood Police Foundation. For those that don't know what the foundation is, it's a group of fantastic community members that come together, and they put on events for us, they go out and put on the gala for us to help, I guess, acquire funds for us, and we're able to get some of the things that we don't necessarily get in our budget. This year, as I said, the foundation was recognized for all their work and their dedication and commitment. And one of the members who was there for 2024 wasn't at the gala, but she's here tonight, and she happens to be a city councillor. And she also had been on the foundation for years, and so she was, how long you been on there, Renee? Or were on there?
Eight, ten, eight years I think, something like that, a long time.
Long time. So what we did is, we ended up getting all of the foundation members a shadow box, and it was a team award, so they get the patch and they get the front and the back of our coin. And then, everybody always gets our standard Starbucks card. I don't know, it's just what we do. But Council President Young was, is a part of the foundation as well, and so she wasn't there that night, but we were able to recognize her last week, two weeks ago, at Police Advisory Board. And so I wanted to catch up with you, and I thought this would be a great opportunity to recognize you for all you've done, for all the years that you put in. I know there was a lot of sacrifice, and I was very grateful that somebody within the agency wanted to recognize all the work that you guys have done, and so I know this is a small piece of appreciation, but I can't tell you enough how thankful we are for everything you've done and the foundation.
You wanna do a picture? I'll take a picture.
Thank you so much.
There we go.
Thank you for your time, that means a lot. Wow. Thank you.
I'll send that to Renee.
Thank you. That's pretty cool.
Thanks Chief. That's all we have, Mayor.
Awesome. Any questions for the city manager?
So.
Yes, you may speak.
Thank you Mayor, appreciate it. It's gonna be kind of a interesting weekend.
It's gonna be an awesome weekend, so I can mention that, but I thought maybe one of you guys wanted to take that. But Highway 99 at sunset will be closed for the span of the bridge that goes over Highway 99, from Friday night at 9:00 PM till Monday morning at 5:00. We're actually hoping that we can open up before 5:00 on Monday, but that's what the road closure is. And then there'll be some additional postings that'll start shortly after next week for the span that's being built over, on the Elks property that will go through the Greenway into Elworth Road. That'll be the next span, and we're looking at the weekend of the 21st, if everything stays on schedule.
Awesome, super exciting. Were you able to make plans to do like, document it with stop mo, stop motion pictures or?
So we do have a couple cameras. IT Department's been working on up right now. They were trying to get one more on a pole out there, plus we're gonna have some footage that's gonna be drawn during the event. And then we do have some additional public work staff working this weekend, as well as extra patrol officers working this weekend, so. Besides the contractor.
Yeah, brilliant.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Is there a more detailed timeline? I know it means to get onto a dolly and then moved in position to then be lifted up.
Yeah, I mean, they're going off of estimates of what they think.
Okay.
That, I mean, I'd hate to, I think that's about the best what we can actually do, councillor on that. I know that they're gonna have an area for folks that actually can go to if they want a waiting area to watch the event, I believe. Kristin, you've been part of that, so.
Sounds great.
So yeah, we're trying to nail that down, but we also know that there could be delays and stuff around. So I think the most, probably the most interesting part of it will be when it gets out on sunset to come up off the dollies. They walk it out and up the road and then install, right? That'll be the biggest portion of it, so.
I think we have a community member who's reached out to us who's planning on getting his drone up there to video it as well.
And if you're on social media, there'll be updates throughout the day, so as they are making progress, someone will be posting.
It's all just be blind, whole event.
Yeah, so just call Councillor Mays, he'll know exactly what's going on.
He who hates, I, yeah, I hate all that stuff.
Yeah, big weekend for getting the first span up, so.
Super exciting. Any other questions for city manager? Or any of the other staff?
Could you ask, next time we talk to the crew over there, I have gotten several complaints of people that have screws in their tires in the Y parking lot. And I don't know, I'm not blaming the construction crew, I'm just saying, it seems like I never heard of people getting screws in their tires before, so maybe, I don't know if there's something they can do about it, but it just feels like maybe sending an intern around to sweep it up.
More than happy to, actually they'll be meeting on Thursday, more than happy to have our team bring that up during the construction meeting.
And safe to say that we'll certainly be so much more traffic on sunset and Elworth, you'll be keeping tabs on everybody to make sure they're behaving in a good way.
Yeah, it's gonna be controlled chaos, to say the least, and we're going to have several officers. I know Washington County is going to help out on the south end with the Newburgh Brookman area as well, King City on the north side. So I think OSP is gonna come in and just, hopefully just have a presence, because we know patients can run thin in these kind of events, so.
Yeah, the positive is it is for 48 hours, and that's it.
Yeah.
And not on a weekday, which.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is a wine festival, McMenville Day though.
And just for further context too, the construction style, oops, thank you. For further context, the construction style we went with, which was actually one of the most cost-effective options, by building the bridge and dropping it in place, we're really minimizing the impact of 99. If we'd have built it in place, we would have had a lot of road closures over this whole construction process, so. A little bit of pain for, over the weekend, and we're done. At least for night night. Any other questions? Awesome. Thank you Greg, thank you Chief. Go on to council announcements. Dan, you wanna start tonight?
Sure. Okay, the school board met last week, last Monday, and they've always got interesting stuff going on. The audit report from last year was a success. They implemented a new electronic device policy for the middle school. It was a door-to-door policy, meaning that the phones were away from when you entered the school to when you left the school, which is different than the high school, and it has been a tremendous success. They were saying at the last meeting, the incidents have almost halved from last year for disruptive classroom behavior. And the kids are engaged during lunch, during the passing hall. It's like, school used to be before phones were as prevalent as they are. There is talk about actively pursuing that for the high school. The high school right now is bell-to-bell, so during class time, the phones are away, but in passing and lunch, they are available to the students, and so much different atmosphere there even. So, I, it seems like it's moving towards the same thing to the high school, which would be great, because the middle school is already doing that, and so they'll just transition into that anyways. We got our accreditation report back, and we were proficient. We're a school of distinction at the high school, which is great, where we should be. I mean, everybody, that's what people are here for, so that we have something to back that up. And then the last action item was discussing inter-district transfers. Since COVID, we, as a community, like all the districts around us, kind of allowed inter-district transfers to occur. But because of funding, the majority of the other districts surrounding us have changed their transfers to zero. Their acceptance is, you know, not zero. And so that was the recommendation from the school board staff to lower ours to zero. It's currently at 30, I believe. And the school board voted against what the recommendation was to keep it at 30. So we are still allowing 30 transfers out, but none of the other surrounding districts are allowing any transfers out. And so, just wanted to bring that up as far as, you know, money for the school district, because it's run off of attendance. And then, last week, on Friday, there was a special school board meeting. We had a resignation for one of our school board members, Krista Thorne. So there is an opening on the school board now. They have initiated the formal process to find a replacement. And so you can look at the school board webpage for more information about that, if you'd like to apply. The library advisory board met as well, and a lot of discussion about the WCCS, the Washington County Library Services Funding and Governance. And the levy, the levy is expiring this year, and they're trying to figure out what that's gonna look like, as well as what services are gonna be offered. The latest round of talks is that the levy is gonna increase, and for Sherwood, we are gonna have a decrease in service. So they're trying to justify how asking citizens for more money with less services is gonna work for this levy. It's not the final version yet, but that's kind of where it's at. Also, because we are between levies for this budgeting cycle, the library is having, you know, it's a little unknown for this biennium budget that we're doing to figure out what the funding is, because we don't really know what the funding is yet. So just be aware of that for the budgeting cycle this year. And then, library, National Library Week is April 6th to 12th, with more details to follow. And that's all I got.
Thanks, and a quick question. The library levy expires next June, not this June, correct?
Correct, yeah, so it'll be the second year of our two-year budget, yes.
Yeah, I think we have some certainty for the first year written out for the second.
Correct. And WCCS did say that there would be a 1% to 2% increase for funding. We weren't sure if we were gonna even get any increase for this next budgeting cycle, so we're at least getting some increase, but certainly not what we need as a.
1% to 2% increase?
Yeah. Hey, take what we can get.
And why we're on that, because we did get a schedule from WCCS. I went over with staff today, and Kristin, correct me if I get these dates wrong, but in May, May 19th is when they're going to be having a meeting for the WCCS Executive Committee to vote on recommendations. So we will be having a council workshop ahead of that to go over that, so we can decide what our input on that is gonna be. But Dan, to your point,
Yeah.
trying to pass, raise a levy rate and lower services is a really, that's an uphill battle, so.
Yeah.
We have a lot to talk about, so. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor. The WACA 911 Budget Committee met and made a recommendation to the full board of WACA for the upcoming budget, so that all the city members, districts will have some certainty, and for sure what it'll mean to 9% year-over-year increase. The Cultural Arts Commission met, talked a little bit about Community Enhancement Grant application ideas. Talked about the medallion art on the bridge. That was about it.
10th anniversary.
And then last Friday, we, the Cultural Arts Foundation, threw a party on Friday, celebrating the 10th anniversary for the Cultural Arts Center. I want to thank the mayor for attending. It was great, you too, for him to share some good words, congratulating the community on the fine center, and yeah, a lot of fun. Well attended, the weather was good. Kristin knows how to have a great team to throw a, throw a party with the foundation.
I think the Friends of the Arts.
Right, or sorry, Friends.
Yeah, Friends of the Arts.
Friends of the, yeah, foundation. All these different. I apologize, Friends of the Arts Center, but yeah, it was fun. It's kind of surprising that it's been 10 years. But you know, I guess, I guess low grade shows.
I was talking to my wife about it, and it feels like it's been there forever, and I mean that in a really good way, more from the perspective as I can't imagine us not having it, so.
Yeah, it's, it's really served us very well for the last 10 years.
Anything else?
No, that'll do.
I too wanted to congratulate Shandun team for the well-put-on anniversary celebration. My grandkids loved it. I was there for a short period of time before I went to another event, and it was very well-attended, so great job on that. I attended the Central Cultural and sat with some other elected officials on Friday evening. It was a great celebration of the Latino community, and they know how to put on a party. They did a really good job and raised a lot of money for the center. I attended the Main Street Sherwood meeting on, I think it was Friday afternoon. There was a lot of conversation about the CEP process, but there was also some news that the Oregon Main Street, or Sherwood Main Street, is going to combine efforts with Brucker Heritage to apply for one of the Main Street grants to do some refurb for the building that's there on that first and, what, first and? The big white building behind Symposium, that building there, which will be great, once it's, if it's accepted. There is a ribbon cutting on Thursday for a new business in Sherwood called Ascend Beauty Bar, and that is at 5:00, which is right there on Sherwood Boulevard. Thank you, Councillor Mays, for attending the board interview tomorrow at the senior center, I appreciate that. We're still trying to fill the board there. I received notice today that the Water Consortium is looking to write a letter of support for HB 3634. I need to do a little bit more research on that, but it's workforce development, it's to grow skilled water workers, which they're in support of, so I have a feeling that the consortium is going to sign on to that. And then it's not too early to plan for fall events. Please put November 8th on your calendar for the Rotary Wine Festival that will be held at the Red Berry Barn here in Sherwood. I believe that's all my notes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Planning Commission met, they just had a training session for new planning commissioners, and a big thank you to all of those that attended, and to Gene, the head of the committee, and the staff. It, we all know it as, we've all taken turns, I guess, on the, on the planning commission. It is a big investment of time, and so the fact that they were able to invest more and become trained, it makes it so that we, it really makes things move slowly, and I highly encourage anybody watching this to, if they're interested at all in politics, to start off on the planning commission, because you, you learn how the sausage is made very, very quickly. So you, you learn just, I don't know, drinking from the fire hose, or whatever, whatever thing you want to use. But, so I'm really glad that we had that training. And also, the same department put on a fantastic event with our consultants about the Old Town Overlay, and had, I'm gonna say, over 40, maybe closer to over 50 people attending from Sherwood that were giving feedback and everything else, and almost timed it perfectly. I think it ended five minutes early because of a power outage, but other than that, it was, it was really well-attended, great engagement, and I heard a lot of very good conversations, so I was just a fly on the wall on that. And then, just as a little bit of positive news, so I've been attending the Oregon Universal Health Plan meetings, just as an observer, and we, I've spent my career in healthcare, and in especially seeing the waste that is somehow avoided by, by almost every other industrialized country, and so I'm thrilled that Oregon is looking into getting a universal health plan. We're still a couple years away from it, but it is, you know, when you look at the amount that we're spending and what we're getting for it, it just, it is, you know, I'd like to, we all know that it's, it's better to buy in bulk, and it's better to, you know, be able to negotiate drugs that are, everybody, everyone in the world, we're subsidizing all of their costs for that, and so I'm thrilled that we're able to, Oregon's gonna look at making a change to that. But go to their website, Oregon, it's called the Universal Health Plan Governance Board, and you can sign up, their meetings are starting, in fact, there's another one on this Saturday, so. And that, oh, and congratulations to both our men and women's basketball teams at the high school for making the first round of playoffs. And that's all I got.
I mean, yeah, thank you. Sorry.
Were you even meaning to say something else?
My brain was in three different places, so.
I was just gonna say, to our audience members out there, we had a very short meeting tonight, so we're all long-winded on our, on our council announcements, but our meetings are not always this short, and we sometimes have more business to handle, so. I am just glad to hear that we're going to put the name Mira Bowie over our main hall in the art center. If anybody didn't know Mira, she was like, like a beacon of light, that young lady. Always joyful, always in a good mood, always a good friend to her friends, and she had just graduated from Chapman University and had, went to New York to start her life in theater and music, and and it was just months when she was diagnosed with leukemia, and it just was a fast, fast one. So what a way to dedicate to Mira's wonderful life and her family is amazing. Okay, so, um, Chief Hanlon talked about the Sherwood Police Foundation and all the work that they do. And we have a gala coming up on May 2nd. Tickets are available at sherwoodpolicefoundation.org, and this is our main fundraiser, where we raise money to help support our police department for the needs that the city budget can't, can't pay for everything, that the needs, the wants, we help support our officers in their mental health and things like that. So it's a great event, it's fun, it's an auction, it's a live auction, a silent auction, dinner, and just a really good night. Somebody, CEP, talked about CEP. Community Enhancement Program grant applications are open right now. And this is a program funded by Metro, no, yes, Metro's $1.10 HP. And those applications close on April 15th, so any nonprofits out there that would like to apply for that, go on our website, Community Enhancement Program and Grant Applications, it'll give you all the information there. Get your applications in. We like to fund great nonprofits. And CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Policy Advisory Board. Thursday, I spent the day in Hillsborough, listening to applicants and their presentations on their grant applications. And then each PAB member, then, we use a program called Zoom Grants, where we go in and individually score the applicants. And then those scores are combined to determine who gets funding. Of course, nothing is certain with that funding right now, because it is federal funding, but we went ahead with the presentations until further notice. We did have to pivot a little bit on the applications, because some of the questions that we've required on the applications are no longer allowed if, with federal funding, but we just stripped that out, and we're able to still see the presentations and be able to score the applications. And that's about it. Oh, Police Advisory Board was also last week, and we got a snapshot of the presentation Chief gave to us in our work session, so.
Awesome, thank you. A few items, I had dinner, I think it was last week, with Jason Snyder, who's our new Washington County Commissioner. He was sworn in in January, and we talked a lot about kind of Sherwood and Sherwood's needs, and how we partner with the county. So he's actually gonna come out, we're gonna do a work session with him, I believe that's beginning of May or April coming up. So we'll all have a chance to meet him and talk to him. We can talk about WCCS, library funding, and mistive funding, and MHRT program, anything we want to talk about, we can have those conversations with him at that time. I've been continuing to lobby on the behalf of Sherwood and the League of Oregon Cities, and the Metro Mayor's Consortium in Salem on various bills, mostly bills that would preempt local control of how we plan for housing, how we plan for infrastructure, et cetera. So that's probably been the bulk of my volunteer life as a mayor recently, is working on that. I testified, testified a couple times. I went down with the, I'm on the executive committee of the Metro Mayor's Consortium, which is all the mayors in, in the Portland metro area, and we did what I call speed dating, and met with House and Senate leadership on a bunch of issues, but mainly around what I just talked about, which is around housing preemption. And we're also asking if we really want to accelerate housing production in the state, we need infrastructure money. We need money for roads, we need money for water and sewer to make it affordable to have, have those homes built. have, have those homes built. So in addition, and more land, yeah, more land. The, so several of us, myself and Councillor Young and Councillor Brousse, are headed to Washington DC on Friday. I think you're headed out Saturday?
I'll already be there.
You're, oh, that's right, you're already going to be there, to the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference. Really exciting news this year is we're bringing five of our high school students along with us. They have a great program for kids in Washington DC. This is all about local government and its nexus into the federal government, so they have great programming. It's going to be a really, really fun trip. It's also an opportunity for us to go and talk to our federal team in Washington DC as we lobby for resources for our city, and we have a pretty good track record over the last five years of bringing dollars back to Sherwood from the federal government, so we're going to continue to work on that. What else? Kim, am I missing anything? Oh, one other thing, you probably watched in the news, Metro and Multnomah County are having some funding problems around supportive housing services, and I actually, I sit on a, there's a, the president's Metro Council, Council Work Group, which is two mayors from each county, two commissioners from each county, and three metro counselors and a few other people that have been convened to kind of work through this whole SHS issue, and, and how do we solve for it? And the reason the mayors are there, because traditionally this has been a metro county program, is there's a growing recognition that to deal with homelessness, housing, and all the wraparound services, you need to be successful at that, at solving for that. Cities are a big part of that equation. Sherwood doesn't have a huge challenge compared to some other cities, but when you're talking about renewing a levy for twenty years, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, so we want to make sure we have a voice at the table in, in terms of how those, how those programs work together and how money's shared. Yes?
Mayor, thank you for serving on that committee of Metro. Greatly appreciate that city's value is being interjected. I know if I was serving in Hillsborough, Beaverton, or Portland, especially Portland, I would be pretty irritable about lack of control with those dollars now they're spent, since it's been clearly demonstrated how poorly Multnomah County has behaved.
You have to give Washington County and Clackamas County a lot of credit. They've done a really good work at reducing homelessness in the county. It's not perfect, there's still a lot of work to be done, but you can just watch the news in Multnomah County and the city of Portland have been a huge challenge, to your point, and we got to figure that out. It's important. And then, I think that is it. I wasn't forgetting anything.
I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
I just would like to say, great job to our mayor, who was on Coin News yesterday, Mondays with the mayor, it's on YouTube, and he had a real, they interviewed him, he did a really good job talking about our Sherwood West and what's going on over there, and our bridge, yeah, and the bridge and the street closure coming up, and so, great job.
The news anchors pointed out to me that we scheduled our bridge closure on the same weekend that McMinville's having their wine festival.
Yes.
So it made for an entertaining conversation, so.
Right, that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. That's right.
That's how we're getting people to stay in Sherwood for the wine weekend.
There you go. Awesome. All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we adjourned.